Everything we get from the public, anything the public defender gets, discovery, we have a right to have that.
Yep.
And no guard. Anything we give, we gotta give us that.
Hi, can I help you?
Yes, I need to do a records request.
Okay, I'll get somebody from records for you.
Thank you. Hi, I need to do a records request. Here's the case number.
Do you have a CW number?
Uh, not with me in the court, uh, maybe in the car though.
Or is it involving you?
Yes.
Do you have your ID on it? Do you mind if I? Thanks. What kind of report is it, like an accident?
No, it's a misdemeanor. Um, I don't know.
Uh, when did it happen?
February fifteenth. Um, but I'm requesting all of the footage that the police department is holding for the case.
All right, let me go see what we have.
Okay.
Sir? Okay, so your case is still listed as being open. I can't give you a copy of it. If you'd like to speak to the detective about it, I wrote his name down there for you.
Yeah, like it's my case, I should be able to have access to it to prepare.
Uh, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. I know it should seem like that, but I can't give it out to anybody while it's still open.
Okay.
But he's defended.
Yeah.
How can he defend himself if he can't acquire what they want to be using against him? That's, that's discovery, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be something for the attorneys to work out. But like I said, if you want to talk to the detective about it, you may be able to do something.
Okay, and what was your name so I know who I spoke with?
My name is Gage.
Gage?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you have like an employee number?
Uh, no.
You're not the only Gage that works here or do you?
I probably am, yeah.
Do you have your last name or something so that I know who I'm speaking with?
I can give you my first name and I can write it down for you.
Okay.
You got a card? Don't you have a card?
I do not have a card.
Public, uh, employee number or any?
Yeah, I can't give that up.
Well, we can get it from the clerk's office.
No.
It's public information.
All right, so you're with the records department, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to put in another records request.
Okay, what do you?
I would like to know all of the people that are working in the records department. I would like their names and their salaries.
Okay, hold on.
Fuck with me.
His ID, your ID, which you didn't have to do.
Yep.
Now, see how I treat you.
Yeah, it's all right.
I was like telling people on the street, I said, don't know.
Can I help you?
Yes, I'd like to do a public records request.
Okay. I understand you already did it.
I, I can barely hear you, I'm partially deaf.
Okay, so you're asking for a record that's currently open then?
Okay, so I asked him his name and he gave me his first name. I would like either his employee number or his last name. If he doesn't want to give that to me, I would like all of the employees' names that work in the records department and their salaries for 2024.
Okay. So, yeah, he'll go ahead and provide his employee number.
Oh, okay, that's nice. But I'd still like to do the other records requests since he made me, wasted my time and did that and wasted your time. I would like to know all of the employees' names that work in the Clearwater Police Department's public records unit. Their names and their salaries, thank you.
He'll get your press.
I appreciate that, Matt.
Give him an email address.
And you.
Yeah, that's a hard act to follow right there. Uh, Mike, you have some tape work, um.
Please give your name for records.
Oh, my name's Michael Taylor, I'm the fourth famous explorer, picture. Um, just letting you know, Mr. Unks, what you had in his hand, you've been served. Uh, Mr. Margulies, you are now served. Uh, Mrs. Call, there's going to be one for the city, you're served. Unfortunately, the, the tyrant, Gandy's not here and there is one for him too.
All right, that's your first warning, violation of law fifteen. You can either go in the hallway and turn inside out.
Cohen versus California allows me to wear this shirt. Cohen versus California, the guy had to remember F, the draft.
Let's take a break.
Tyrant, tyrant.
Tyrants.
This is no different. This is, this is guy.
Remove that gentleman also.
Tyrant, tyrant, I know, I.
Tyrants.
I'm getting myself. I'm getting myself. I don't care, shut. These are people I hear will be paying for lawsuits, your taxpayers. It's not you. This is the first one, you're gonna get, you just got a second one. I, I'm leaving right now, dude, what are you talking about, dude?
Are we in recess?
Shut up, don't talk to me and I won't say nothing. That's how, that's how it is. You don't talk to me. Fuck the police.
Amen.
Fuck the police and fuck the city council too. Shut my head.
There you go. Maybe two. Free speech. So what? I wasn't a cram out where it doesn't feel good, buddy. Go ahead, go ahead, you making a threat? You making, that's a promise. So they have to do something. You don't want to talk like that. You ever heard of freedom of speech? You know what women are? Do you have a pick?
They're in a forum. When it's in recess, they're in a forum.
Freedom of speech. This is a public forum.
You don't understand?
And they don't want to hear that thing? They need to stay at home then.
Are you, are you threatening me? Okay, so I'm, I'm free to stay here. Is that what you're saying?
What, what law?
Please leave me alone. Your contact is non-consensual, please leave me alone.
Stay along, anybody, leave the law.
Are you gonna arrest me if I don't leave? Then please leave me alone.
Mayor Director, first blue shirt and the person on the right to you?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, here's the deal, gentlemen. You've been issued a trespass warning, you refuse to leave, you will be arrested.
Fuck the police.
I'm writing up my letter. I want, I want to see the order in writing, rich you assholes never did submit it to us last month and you promised you'd give me a copy of it, you never did.
Gentlemen, the library is closed, you need to leave or you'll be arrested.
The whole building? No, I'll tell them.
I'm leaving.
Library closed, the meeting's still going on, the meeting is still going on, sir.
The building is closed for public, it's only for the meeting. Since you've been removed from the meeting, you need to leave the building. I told you, you were issued a trespass warning. If you refuse to leave, you will be arrested.
So you tell me I gotta leave a public building?
Yes, it's closed.
The library is closed.
It's only here for the meeting. If you do not leave, you're gonna be arrested.
Don't give me damn director for threats. Y'all gonna learn someday, y'all gonna learn someday. You took an oath and now it's competition. And you let some son of a bitch in here called mayor, don't get up on me.
Turn around and leave.
Ain't no say I worry I get in there. I'm leaving, I'm heading the fucking door. I'm going to the door, I can walk and talk to them.
What's your name?
I can walk and talk to.
What's your name? You don't have a ID, what's your name?
Officer Banks.
And badge number?
Nine four two one.
Why you got your, uh?
Bitch boy Banks. Bitch boy Banks. There you go.
Come on.
Hey, hey, don't push it, dude.
Get the law.
Fucking piggy, piggy.
Fucking terrorists, Nazi pieces of fucking shit. Go live in Korea, you north fucking piece of trash.
Four, five, six. Six of them just on the outside of this council meeting and then there's another three. Hey, all right, hey, hold on, hey, come on. Did they trespass you or what? They kicked you out, right?
Well, yeah, but.
But you can't go in there, that's.
I'm not gonna go in there.
No, you can't go to the library, this is the library. That's why I'm standing here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the other side of the gate, even though it's open.
Yeah, this.
I'm gonna go and push that button, keep that door open though.
There he goes, there he goes, stabbing on the flag.
Yeah, that's my boy.
That's, that's, that's gonna be another score. Woo! Yeah!
That's my boy, Gio.
Yeah, boy!
Gio, Gio, Gio!
Gio!
Fuck the blue line gang!
Fuck the Clearwater police!
Step on that silver bitch! Tell them, fuck the blue line gang! That's my boy Gio, dawg!
I know, dude, don't. I'm getting my stuff.
I'm just explaining to you that you're being...
I'm getting my... Just shut the front door. Leave me the fr-. This is the first one and you're gonna get... You just got a second one.
Mr. Taylor, you've been issued a trespass warning for the night if you refuse to leave.
I'm leaving right now, dude. What are you talking about?
And try not to make any more distractions, please.
Shut up. Don't talk to me and I won't say nothing. That's how, that's how it is. You don't talk to me...
Fuck the police.
Yeah, fuck them all, dude. Look at all you guys. Hi.
Mr. Taylor, the library's closed. You gotta leave. If you don't leave, you're gonna be arrested.
Name and badge number. Name and badge number.
Leave, Mr. Taylor.
I'm leaving. God, stiff. Why you gotta be like this, dude? You didn't have to be like this. I didn't even serve you a friggin lawsuit and now that you're doing this, because I got a second one now 'cause you just kicked me out again, I will give you and I can't wait to depose all of you. Look, there's like friggin nine of y'all in here for what?
Officer Banks, can you make sure that you guys have an out, please?
Yeah, I can do it. I gotta go outside the fucking gate.
Hey, there was a, there was another gentleman. I think he said to remove. Alright.
State of law, he violated. In the law.
Not getting back to work, you in there, saying you violated the law.
Okay.
Are you gonna arrest me if I don't leave?
I stepped out. Did they tell them that they both needed to go?
Yes.
They've been told to leave? Mayor, you directed the person in the blue shirt and the person on the right to leave? Okay.
Same thing.
Alright, here's the deal, gentlemen. You've been issued a trespass warning. You refuse to leave, you will be arrested.
Fuck the police.
I'll write it up when I get out. I wanna, I wanna see the ordinance in writing, which you assholes never did submit that to us last month and you promised you'd give me a copy of it. You never did, stiff.
Gentlemen, the library is closed. You need to leave or you will be arrested. You've already been given a trespass warning.
The whole building or just the...
No, I'll tell them to leave.
No, the building. The building's closed. It's only open for the meeting. You've been removed from the meeting. You need to leave the building.
The meeting is still going on, sir.
And the building's closed for public. It's only for the meeting. Since you've been removed from the meeting, you need to leave the building. I told you, you needed to, you were issued a trespass warning. If you, if you refuse to leave, you will be arrested.
So you tell me I gotta leave a public building?
Yes, it's closed.
The library's closed.
It's only here for the meeting. If you do not leave, you're gonna be arrested.
Don't give me damn directions. Y'all gonna learn someday. You gonna learn someday. You took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and you let some son of a bitch in here called mayor, and don't get up on me.
Turn around and leave.
Ain't no say I hurry I get in there. I'm leaving. I'm heading the fucking door.
No, you're not. You're talking to us. Leave.
I'm going to the door. I could walk and talk to him. I could walk and talk to him. Why you got your, uh, link bags covered up?
Right this way.
What's that?
Right this way.
Don't be bumping up against me.
You can't bump into him.
You bumped up against me, Tyron.
I didn't touch you.
So much for an oath.
Banks, if they come back in or attempt to...
Yeah.
Whoa, look at that thing.
What's that thing called? That one?
Gimp ball. That's what it is. Almost said gimp.
Tic-tac thirty bucks.
Tyron. Tyron. Tyron, this is no different. This is, this is gonna be the second. Tyron. I know, I do. I'm getting my stuff. I'm getting my...
You don't care.
Shut the front door.
He can pay you for lawsuit, you taxpayer.
This is the first one and you're gonna get, you just got a second one. I'm leaving right now. Shut up. Don't talk to me and I won't say nothing. That's how, that's how it is. You don't talk to me...
Fuck the police.
Yeah, fuck them all.
Fuck the police.
I'm leaving. Name and badge number. Name and badge number. Name and badge number. Name and badge number, Taylor. I'm leaving. God, stiff. Why you gotta be like this, dude? You didn't have to be like this. I didn't even serve you a friggin lawsuit and now that you're doing this, because I got a second one now 'cause you just kicked me out again, I will give you and I can't wait to depose all of you. Look, there's like friggin nine of y'all in here for what?
Officer Banks, can you make sure that you guys have an out, please?
Yeah, I, I did. I gotta go outside the fucking gate. Fuck all y'all.
Mayor, you directed the person in the blue shirt and the person on the right to leave?
That's correct.
Okay. They've been dis-...
Same thing.
Alright, here's the gentleman. You've been issued a trespass warning. You refuse to leave.
Fuck the police.
I'll write it up when I get out. I wanna, I wanna see the ordinance in writing, which you assholes never did submit that to us last month and you promised you'd give me a copy of it. You never did, stiff.
I'm getting one of your side. Look, there's like friggin nine of y'all in here for what?
Officer Banks, can you make sure that you guys have an out, please?
Yeah, I, I did. I gotta go outside the fucking gate. Fuck all y'all. Dude, this is unreal. Did you swear no to defend the rights of mine, of my rights?
Alright, uh, how can I describe?
Yeah, I get it, dude. You're fucking dope. This is no different. This is, this is gonna be the second. I know, I, dude, don't. I'm getting my stuff. I'm getting my...
That's fine.
Shut the front door. Leave me the fr- This is the first one and you're gonna get, you just got a second one. I, I'm leaving right now, dude. What are you talking about?
I mean, at least...
Shut up. Don't talk to me and I won't say nothing. That's how, that's how it is. You don't talk to me...
Fuck the police.
Yeah, fuck them all. Look at all you guys. Hi. I'm leaving. Name and badge number. Name and badge number.
Name is two.
Free speech.
So what? Go ahead. Go ahead. You, you making a threat? You making a threat?
That's a promise.
A promise? Well, get up and do something then. You wanna talk like that? You ever heard of freedom of speech?
Do you know what women are?
You, you ever speak to him?
Be nice around women.
Freedom of speech.
Forum of code of conduct, correct?
Yeah, well, this, this is a public forum.
You don't understand that?
If they don't wanna hear this thing, they need to stay at home then.
Are you, are you threatening me? Okay, so I'm, I'm free to stay here? Is that what you're saying? Are you gonna arrest me if I do not leave? Okay, please leave me alone. Your contact is non-consensual. Please leave me alone.
State of law, he violated. In the law.
Are you gonna arrest me if I don't leave? Then please leave me alone.
Mayor, you directed the person in the blue shirt and the person on the right to leave?
That's correct.
Same thing.
Alright, here's the deal, gentlemen. You've been issued a trespass warning. You refuse to leave, you will be arrested.
Fuck the police.
I'll write it up when I get out. I wanna, I wanna see the ordinance in writing, which you assholes never did submit that to us last month and you promised you'd give me a copy of it. You never did, stiff.
Gentlemen, the library is closed.
Welcome back to the 15th purpose encapsulation. Please move this gentleman to the public side. Anyone else want to talk to Mr. Johnson?
Sir, you need to go back over here to the seating area.
Just on the side. Appreciate it. You can remain in here. You just need to be seated on that side. Settle over, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is the council city staff. I'm Bill Johnson. I'm the card of the firm in a moment. Uh, two items, uh, to comment on your link. The first point is extra work session on...
You can just take a seat over on the side. Thank you. Appreciate it. You can remain in here. You just need to be seated on that side. Thank you.
Settle over there, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is the council city staff. I'm Bill Johnson. I'm the card of the firm in a moment. Uh, two items, uh...
Anyone else want to talk to Mr. Johnson?
Sir, you need to go back over here to the public seating area.
Just on the side. Appreciate it. You can remain in here. You just need to be...
Yep, you can have a seat. Just settle over there, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is the council city staff. I'm Bill Johnson. I'm the card of the firm in a moment.